I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, right now, we just want to pause and say thank you for allowing us to come out today just to do the business of the village of Woodline. We ask that you continue to purge our minds, our hearts, again, that we make the right decisions for the village of Woodline. Father God, right now, I just ask a special prayer in all the homes here in the village of Woodline as we celebrate this Advent season. And Lord, I just ask that you be with us all in these blessings that will be acted in thy Son Jesus' name before his sake. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Poole.
Present.
Esther Boyd.
You.
Rosemary Brown.
Present.
Cindy Chandler.
Present.
Paula Fitzgerald.
Present.
Robert Lawson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Trebyou.
Present.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes from November the 29th, 2022.
A motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 29th, 2022.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second. All ayes?
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting that was on December the 13th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the special council meeting on December 13th, 2022.
I'll second.
Motion been moving properly, second. All ayes?
Aye.
Very well. All right, we have a presentation today, correct, clerk?
Yes, we do.
All right.
We have a lease roll up from Hamilton County. Art Lee, so?
Mr. Leece, welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I missed out earlier. Brief little packet of slides to follow along my quick presentation. I promised this is going to be very brief. I'm just here to give a quick heads up about the upcoming solid waste plan update. So to begin, we were formerly known as the Hamilton County Recycling and Solid Waste District, but we are now called Hamilton County Resource. We're a non-regulatory county office with the mission of reducing waste that goes to the landfill. We're part of the Department of Environmental Services under the Board of County Commissioners. So before I dive into the plan update, I want to quickly highlight a few programs that we have to support the communities in reducing how much waste goes to the landfill. First, we have grants. First, we have grants, and those are the Residential Recycling Initiative Grant as well as the Innovation Grant. Both go towards helping with recycling and reducing waste in communities. For businesses, schools, nonprofits, any organizations in the community. We have outreach campaigns, which I usually lead as I am the outreach specialist for the counties. I go around and educate all schools and residents, any interested groups in the county. We have environmental enforcement with a full-time sheriff deputy to investigate illegal dumping throughout the county. And we finally have drop-off programs such as an annual household hazardous products drop-off that we usually hold in October. Now, we're looking to have it year-round hopefully throughout the campus. One of the functions of a solid waste district is to update a 15-year solid waste plan every five years. This plan considers if Hamilton County will have enough capacity to dispose of our waste and what programs our office will have to meet the state mandated recycling goals. The full draft plan is available on our website under About Us. We have been working on the plan since early 2021 and are now in the last phase. So this is a rough timeline of where we're at now. If you see the page that has the management plan update. We have the Ohio EPA reviewed it in September. We are currently in the final stages. My manager just made the final changes, and she has sent it back to the EPA. And then it will soon go out for a 90-day ratification in early 2023. That's where you guys come in. So once we go out for ratification, we have those 90 days for the plan to be ratified by at least 60% of the population in the county. So we must have approval of the largest municipality, Cincinnati, of course. And our last plan update received 100% approval. We're hoping for that again this year, but there's some big stuff coming. The plan update itself is 300 pages long, so I'll hit on some very, very quick points that will apply to you. The Residential Recycling Initiative, Residential Recycling Incentive Program is budgeted the same as the last plan at $800,000. Should the revenue go higher than $100,000 than the projections, the current draft has those funds going to the Residential Recycling Incentive Program to increase the budget to $900,000. New in this plan, the communities will be able to count commercial recycling and composting programs, which will boost how much they are recycling and it will boost how much they are able to get at a minimum threshold from our grant. So communities will at least receive a set amount, and the current projection is $5,000. That will double yours from last year. You guys got $2,666 last year for your recycling diversion rate. So that could very easily double your amount that you would get for increasing helping recycling. The commercial and industrial sectors make up 86% of the waste generated in Hamilton County, yet historically, Resource has only allocated a very small percentage of our budget to working with businesses. So we'll be increasing our business assistance in this area. Finally, an important point is that we hired a local consultant, Price Education Consulting in Bedcon, to evaluate our current programs from a diversity, equity, and inclusion perspective and help us develop future measurements and goals. The full DEI report is on our website again and also is incorporated into the plan update text. And each one of our sections in the plan, we have incorporated DEI measurements and goals for the future. It's very important to us that we offer accessible and inclusive programming to reach all of the people who live and work in the county. Finally, unrelated to DEI, one of the last pieces that we are researching now is how changing our out-of-district fee for the landfill would impact waste flow into the county. So if we increased the fee for other county waste coming into Hamilton County, would that decrease the waste or not? We're trying to figure that out, but right now, it will not increase any of our fees that will be paid as part of the plan. So that will not affect you all too much, but those are just a few. The last thing on the, on your final page, the, there's a contact slide. It's not for me, it's for my solid waste manager, Michelle Balls. She has been a part of this entire plan. She's seen it through, written those 300 pages with help from a few others, but she would be the one to contact with any major questions. I can answer a few right now if you have any small questions, but she would be the one to get all the details.
May I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
Put your website URL, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Here, let me show you.
So.
And do you represent Rumpi?
No. We work in partnership with Rumpi to help educate about what is recyclable and what's trash, but we are not affiliated with Rumpi.
Any other questions from council?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Happy holidays to you as well. Very well. All right. Clerk, any petitions claimed from the public?
Yes.
All right, very well. Committee reports, committee of the whole, December the 13th, 2022. Mr. Lawson?
Committee reported the whole, December 13th, 2020, like the mayor said. We started our meeting at 6 o'clock. Okay, members that attended the meeting were Mayor Poole, Esther Boyd, Rosemary Brown, Cindy Chandler, Paula Fitzgerald, me, myself, I was the chair, and Kiana Trebyou. Also in attendance were Ashton Turley, Tim Engel, Paula Sherman, Lieutenant Williams, Chief Johnson, and also Leroy Williams. We had a, first thing we had on the agenda, we had a presentation from Juneteenth. And the presentation was really, really done well. He had pictures, slides of our last Juneteenth. I'll just kind of go through these, so you can see how much time and stuff was prepared for our presentation. It lasted probably 45 minutes or so, but all the pictures are really nice. And this is just a plan for what we intend to do for next Juneteenth. Now, there were pros and cons. There were more pros than there were cons, and I really won't get into the details of that. We'll keep you posted, and we're really looking forward to our Juneteenth celebration coming up. Okay? The meeting also went on, and we talked about the gun range. And Turley, I'm gonna let him keep his steam on that because it's kind of going back and forth. Then we also discussed plans for Harmony Park, which we'll also go into detail with Turley's report. And then we also had a demolition of the flower shop on December 15th. And if you notice, our flower shop's been there for a very, very long time, and there wasn't any flowers. So it's a good idea to tear it down, and a lot of our residents, a lot of our residents go up that hill. So we're planning on putting maybe a bulletin board there or something, some kind of information that our residents can get leaving and entering the village. Also, we talked about Ronnie Road in Woodstock. That's where my good friend Cindy lives, so she's probably over there smiling. And we had plans for bed 2023rd. And that project has been going a long time, and I know people are very interested in what is happening. So hopefully, 2023rd, and Turley will give you some more information on this. I'm still in all this thing. So he will give you a little bit more information on Ronnie Road. We're also having a new website for the village. And current, once the current department head's complete, completed for final review. For the pool, RFP, the RFP for managing the pool for 2023 has been posted. We'll update with council as soon as the proposals are met. Also, in Public Works, we've had lighting down on Springfield Pike. I don't know. Well, I know the residents have noticed it, but we had a company come in, and they did a good job putting the lights up. Servail is the name of the company?
Servail.
Servail is the name of the company. And we liked it so much that firefighters actually put a bulletin board down there for thanking them for putting lights down on Springfield Pike. So if you haven't been down Springfield Pike and seen the lights, make sure you get down there. Okay, and then also, we talked about, in Public Works, we talked about the dry run. We got snow coming this week. So our Public Works Department, they're already prepared. It's going to be a big weekend for them. We want them to stay safe, so if you see them outside, maybe you might want to give them some hot cocoa. Cheer them on, maybe shovel, get some of the snow out if you can. Don't want to do too much, but they're really prepared, and they're excited. They're waiting, so hopefully, everybody stays safe. Okay, and our fire department, Chief Johnson informed us that we had grants over $100,000. Then also with the volunteer firefighter program, we spent 937 hours total. In the explorer program, they spent 638 hours total. And then in the police department, we got my favorite police chief, Kevin Williams, and he'll update you on the report, but he stated he's settling into his new position. And he looks good with that nice haircut today. We also talked about, there were 75 children that attended pictures with Santa, and then we got an event coming up. Flick is Friday at 7:00 PM, but dinner.
It was last Friday.
Oh, oops, well, hopefully, you attended Flick.
I did, yeah.
And hopefully, how was the food, Mayor?
It was awesome. It was awesome.
It was.
Great, great. And then, last but not least, we, Woodline does have a code enforcer. He's not really happy at this time because a lot of his stuff is being sent back to him. So he's coming up with a new plan so he can get you the information that you need so he don't be a cold baller. That was pretty much it. Our meeting adjourned at 8:25. Mayor, that's all I ask.
Mayor?
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lawson, Committee of the Whole? Having a good report, Mr. Lawson. Finance Committee, Ms. Rosemary Brown.
Yes, finance man will be December 19th at 7:00 PM. Present was myself, Pam Fitzgerald, and Cindy Chandler. Also present was Tim Engel, Charles Willis, Ashley Madden, Mr. Turley, and Cindy Chan, Kiana Trebyou was present also. Regarding the income, Willis gave a report on our income tax update. The village collected $485,200, $485,200 and 17 cents in taxes related to the month of November. Of that amount, $3,459.69 was deposited into the village treasury in November, and the remaining $481,740.48 was deposited in December. Our tax distribution, village tax distribution, general fund, $386,472.48 was deposited into that fund. The road tax fund got $63,286.98. Our debt got $22,783.31. And our capital projects got $12,657.40 for that total of $485,200.17. The road tax, since the inception of our road tax in 2019, we collected a grand total of $3,161,186.42. For 2022, we collected $949,155.40. Of that $3 million total, the total disbursement thus far has been $1,121,524.22, leaving us a fine balance of actual monies, which would be $2,39662.20. And the village has, tax revenues are currently 24% above revenue from last year and 40% above tax revenue from 2020. And that's about it. And I'll leave the remaining finance for Mr. Engel.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Ms. Brown in finance? All right. Having a municipal manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just give some brief updates from last week's committee of the whole. That Senator, Senator, wow. Council member Lawson coming very well. So no update on the gun range. We're going to be meeting with the city of Cincinnati next month. However, for Harmony Park, the last count was three bidders. So we're going to have the bid opening on the 21st, and of course, we'll choose the lowest and best bid in order to complete the park. So we'll have more information coming the next meetings in January. Thanks, everyone who attended the demo ceremony. The video is going to be posted soon on ICRC TV, and it was really an exciting time to see that building come down. Really appreciate it. No real update on Ronnie Road and Woodstock. It's the same. However, we did get a quote for six fire hydrants, and six fire hydrants, like everything else, they've gone up. It's about $16,000. So fire hydrants about a year ago were about $1,700 apiece. They've almost doubled that now. So it's, it just shows you, you know, how things are going up. We did meet with the city of Wyoming on the mini-grant. We've got two bids back, and we're going to ask them to kind of re-scope it because the prices came in a little bit high, and we want to do something in conjunction with Wyoming. We want to have the same vendor because we want this, this gateway and this, this streetscape to be, to make sense for each of us. And it would be easier to do that with the same vendor, the same contractor. The website is still going to go live at the beginning of next month, and we've got, is it two responses for the pool RFP so far?
Two.
Yeah, so we're going to be evaluating them to get the best fit for the village. We are going to, or I'll be scheduling a meeting to meet with council so that we can discuss Juneteenth, so I can gather your concerns and then take those to call a play. Also, I'll be reaching out for a work session next month so that we can talk about goals for the next year. And I wanted to make this brief because we have an update on police staffing, which is something that has been a concern to all of us here. And so I've invited Chief Williams, and he is going to give a report on a current staffing update and a strategy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So village manager, finance director, and I had what I would call a very positive meeting this morning. We've come to an agreement that we can make things work with the hire of one new officer. It's going to be a patrol officer. What that does for us is it puts us in a position to have two teams of three officers, two teams of two officers. Two teams of three officers will work at night. Those will be our night teams. Two teams of two officers will be our day shift officers. In the event that we have any type of call that requires a third officer, I would rotate in as the third officer on day shift. So I think that that's a really good common ground we came to. It's good coverage, understand, you know, within the parameters of ordinance and everything. So we really, really had a good positive meeting this morning. That's where we are with our staffing issue. Again, as I think I previously stated, we're looking for one of our officers to come out on the road the second week of January. So that's one who was, he was injured. He's believing through his physical therapy and everything. He'll probably be back on the road the second week of January. We have another officer whose training is going very well. So we look for her to be in her own car also the second week of January. So that's about the timeframe, give or take a week, that we look to have that full complement that we came to in the ordinance.
Okay.
That's when we'll start. That's when we'll start. So everything through patience, hard work has kind of worked itself out.
Very well. Good stuff.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Question, question. How soon will the new officer be hired?
Right now, I still have to reach out to him. I have not heard him, but I haven't heard from him. But we do have someone who we are ready to hire. I would say in two weeks, so after the new year, just so that he can give his current employer the courtesy of giving him two weeks' notice. So once we bring him in, he'll be outfitted. He is what we call road-ready, meaning he's backed us up. He's a very experienced police officer. So once we get him outfitted, his training period should be very short. So I would look for him at the latest to probably be on the road by himself in March.
He's been an officer before on the salt barns.
Yes, absolutely. He's currently a Glendale officer.
Okay.
All right.
So Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
So with that proposed staffing module, how many officers does that give our department currently?
Currently, that's going to put us at 11.
Okay, and you feel as the acting chief, you, that's something that's comfortable with you?
Yes, for, for what the needs that we have now, that's awesome, actually. Because as our stage, we were running so short, then worried about officers falling ill and everything like that. So that puts us in, that puts us in.
I applaud village manager Turley and acting chief Williams for working that out. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well. Very well. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
I'd like to add, too, this is something we'll keep our eye on, too, right?
Right.
I mean, we're, we're an agile community, so if we see holes that need to be filled, we'll solve it.
Okay.
We solve problems.
Good deal.
I want to congratulate Rec for a wonderful flick, and then I also want to...
Yes, 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 yes.
And I also want to, of course, give a shout out to our public works director, who's been working hard, and we spent the day out in the coal working on situating where the new salt barn should go and how we can make that area more conducive and more effective for our public works department.
Good, good, good. Good, good stuff.
And with that, I, I'm open to questions.
Don't have any questions. I, I know you talked about flick. Flick was a wonderful celebration. Sure. Wonderful celebration. I really enjoyed that every year, and I'm excited for Public Works as we get to hopefully use our new tools and our new toys on Thursday and Friday. So I'm looking forward to that, showing just the residents what we've invested in here in the village and putting it to work. So congratulations, Ms. Banks and your team. Be safe out there because they are saying that it's going to get bad. So just wanted to point those couple of things out. Ms. Boyd?
I wanted to ask you and Paula, the director, about the summer program, the feed program. I was asked about that. Is that still on track to happen?
So I can let Paula speak to that. I know that we have been talking about partnering with, you know, someone to get that up and going. And yeah, we're still in discussions on the best way to do that. Have there been any updates since that?
There's no updates on that as yet. Hopefully, when we get back in January, we will have a meeting with individual, your home partner with.
Okay.
So that we utilize their kitchen facility and...
Okay.
Very well, okay.
And I, I have a concern about a building on Glendale Millford. I'll give that to you. It's a company, and they say it's crazy. But I'll, I'll give that to you tonight.
Sounds good.
Very well. All right.
Thank you, and thank you for the police update.
That's Chief Williams.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Thank you, Anna Ture.
I want you to make the motion.
Thank you. Ms., we're going to kind of go backwards just for a quick minute. Ms. Brown, just need to approve the bank reconciliation receipt listing and payment listing.
Make a motion for the approval of the bank reconciliation receipt listing and payment listing.
Second.
Motion been moving properly, second. All ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Law directors report.
We skipped over Tim. Sorry, Mayor. We're missing the finance.
We sure did. How about that? That's just, I'm going to fight this crap again tonight. Tim, I apologize for that.
He'll shut all this down.
I apologize for that.
Now, to pick up where Crum and Tron left off, finance committee obviously was in December 19th, 2022. Finance committee was provided appropriations and revenues reports. As of November 30th, 2022, the village collected 104% of budgeted revenues and expended 71% of appropriations. Receipts and expense reports were also included. As of December, sorry, as of November 30th, 2022, the village collected $889,212.6 and dispersed $622,194.27. General fund disbursements were higher than the total disbursements for the village, where the general fund dispersed 86% of budgeted expenditures, but also collected 105% of total general fund budgeted receipts. Unbalanced and bankrupt reconciliation reports were provided to the finance committee. We discussed an overtime and salary incentive report as well as recreation receipts versus expenses.
Very well. All right. Any questions for Mr. Engel? Again, I apologize for that.
No problem.
Yes, it's all in my mind. All right.
Did we finish the vote? I stopped, I didn't get any... No, we did. We did. We finished it. Miss Trebyou, let me get clarification. Were you the second on that?
I made the motion.
I have Rose, Ms. Rosemary. I mean, I'm second, I'm sorry. Rosemary made it, and I'm second, I have. Okay. That's all I needed.
Yes.
Thank you.
No worries. Law directors report.
The only thing we're working on right now is we're preparing for the Taconic Terrace property closing that is currently scheduled for January 18th. But other than that, things have been fairly quiet.
Very well. Quiet is good. All right. Just a couple of things. I, I don't have a lot of things on here. Vice Mayor will get the monthly statement for an approval tonight. I do have to... tonight. I do have to approve that, um, as we enter the Advent season, Christmas season, Hanukkah, whatever it may be. Um, we just wish that everyone enjoy the Christmas season with your family, friends, um, and stay safe out there. It looks like the flu and all that good stuff is kind of going back around. We just ask that, uh, we continue to, uh, stay safe out there. Um, as I say in all of my meetings, our kids are out of school, so they're in the streets, on the sidewalk. Please be mindful of those students that are out in the streets, being careful with them. Um, just a, a quick reminder about that. So that's really all I had. Vice Mayor, if you could be so kind enough for my monthly statement.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the mayor's court monthly statement in the amount, in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and three dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion been moved and properly second. All eyes?
Aye.
Very well. All right. Legislation?
First item is ordinance number forty, twenty twenty-two, an ordinance revising the fee schedule for the Woodland Recreation Department and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number forty dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number forty dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been moved and properly second on the suspension. Roll call, please.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number forty dash twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion for passage of ordinance forty dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
I need a motion declaring an emergency on ordinance number forty dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to declare that an ordinance, uh, to declare ordinance number forty, twenty twenty-two an emergency.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the emergency.
Okay. Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
The next item is ordinance number forty-one, twenty twenty-two, an ordinance to advance up to sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents from the general fund to the FEMA Firefighters COVID-19 Supplemental Fund.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number forty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number forty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the suspension.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number forty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion for passage of ordinance forty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending section five point zero-two of the Village of Woodland Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the suspension.
Is that Robert Lawson?
Yes.
All right, roll call. Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion for passage of ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
I need a motion to declare ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two an emergency.
I'll make the motion to declare ordinance number forty-two, twenty twenty-two an emergency.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the emergency.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
The next item is resolution number fifty-eight, twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving change orders to the contract with Mount Pleasant Blacktopping for the Timberland Drive and Timberview Court Improvements Project.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number fifty-eight, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion for passage of resolution number fifty-eight, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
The last item is resolution number fifty-nine, twenty twenty-two, a resolution declaring the necessity for a tax levy in excess of the ten mil limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings, and sites for such buildings used directly in the operation of a police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police communications, I'm sorry, or part-time police communications or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under section one forty-five point four-eight or seven forty-two point three-three of the revised code, or for the payment of other related costs, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number fifty-nine, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion for passage of resolution number fifty-nine, twenty twenty-two.
And I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Tribute?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Penny Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Is there any other new business that comes before this council? Ms. Travee?
Just something quick. I just wanted to say thank you to, um, specifically to Tim and Monica, um, for getting the information turned around to us so quickly. I know we had a shorter...
Yes.
...time frame this time because we had our council meeting earlier. And so, finance committee met yesterday, and we have thorough and complete minutes today, and also all of the financial reports. So thank you guys for the extra effort.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Very well, very well. Again, is there, yes. Again, is there any other business that comes before this council? Having none, I need a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion been moved and properly second. All eyes?
Aye.
Very well. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you.